I'd like to call to order the City Council and Planning Commission joint meeting, the city of Bayport, and we're going to start with a roll call from Sarah for the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Siegfried?
Here.
Oaks?
Here.
And Commissioner Kip is ill this evening.
Thank you. Matt, will you call the roll for the City Council?
Yep. Comis-- uh, Councilmember Dahl?
Here.
Councilmember Gilmar?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Mayor Hansen?
Here.
And then Councilmember Bliss is not here tonight.
All right. So, we are going to start with a public hearing, um, consider-- oh, considering-- it says we're starting with a public hearing, considering resolutions for annexation petitions from Baytown and preliminary plat for Bay Haven development from Pratt Homes. Dan is going-- Dan Lick from the Planning Company, is that what that stands for? Okay, I'm like, TPC, is here to present it, and we also have in the audience representatives from Pratt Homes who can come up after Dan, so.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Councilmembers and Commissioners. Dan Lick with the Planning Company. If you want to switch to the screen display, thank you. So, this item comes to the joint meeting tonight after being opened as a public hearing at the previous Planning Commission meeting in January. There were some changes made to the project that were different from what the Planning Commission and City Council had considered in October last year as a concept plan, and we wanted to be sure with the developers' agreement that we had all the information that the Planning Commission and City Council needed to make decisions on these items presented coherently and consistently throughout the process. So, we took a couple of weeks to regroup and bring this all back in one package for you this evening. So, I'll review kind of the annexation, zoning, and subdivision applications that are before you. Developers will address their supposed housing units that they intend to build here, and a number of other elements that they wish to cover as part of their requests. So, the applications that are coming forward to the city include an annexation for properties in Baytown Township to bring those into the city of Bayport, amendment of the comprehensive plan to address those properties now being subject to the city's development regulations, including also then amending the zoning map to establish zoning of those properties as part of the city, and then the specific development plans for Bay Haven at Bayport, including a PUD general development plan and a preliminary plat. So, we kind of have two parallel actions going over. Currently, we've got both the preliminary plat covering a smaller area of the highlighted properties, and then the additional annexation of these properties that aren't part of the Bay Haven project, but basically everything north of that existing public right-of-way is proposed to be annexed now into the city of Bayport. Surrounding the area, you have the ISD 834 in Barker's Alps Park. To the east of it, to the north of Fifth Avenue North is obviously the fire department facility, as well as the state prison. To the west are rural properties as part of Baytown Township. To the south of the right-of-way, that's with-- just to the south of these properties, there are some lots that are within Baytown Township. Then to the south of that, you have the Inspiration Development. So, this is somewhat of a logical extension of the city of Bayport, given that it's east of Stagecoach Trail and south of Fifth Avenue North, similar to what the city looked at when it annexed the property for the ISD 834 property. So, to the annexation process, the city would do this by ordinance. The city would opt for an ordinance that the criteria for annexation have been met, that the property is less than 120 acres in area, it abuts the current city boundaries, it's not currently serving utilities, but utilities are available, and there's a petition from the three property owners involved. The process we followed for this is the same as done for the ISD 834 project, where written notice was provided to Baytown Township and all abutting property owners, as well as published in the city's official newspaper. Planning Commission holds a public hearing, they make recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council adopts an ordinance affecting the annexation to the city, and then that's reviewed by the state administrative law judge, and that ordinance is approved. Once the annexation happens, then, of course, we need to include the property as part of the comprehensive plan, similar process, Planning Commission public hearing, council approval. This then goes to Metropolitan Council for final approval in consistency with regional plans, and then that comes back to the city for final approval and implementation. So, we're effecting two amendments of the comprehensive plan here. The first is to include the property within the municipal urban service area, which is where sanitary sewer and water utilities are to be made available. When the 2018 comprehensive plan was done, this area east of Stagecoach Trail and south of Fifth Avenue North was identified as a potential future service area. Again, it seemed like a really logical place where urban development would be likely to happen, but because there was no annexation agreement with Baytown Township, the city couldn't basically state, "We expect that this property will develop, we're going to include it in our MUSA and plan for urban land uses." So, again, the utilities are available to the property to provide for development of the properties included in the annexation, so the amendment is appropriate. Then also, with respect to the comprehensive plan, is designating what land uses to occur there. Obviously, the proposal for development is residential development consisting of single-family and multiple-family dwelling units. The requirements under the regional plan adopted as part of the 2018 comprehensive plan require minimum five units per acre, and that's developable acre-- acres, which is significant when looking at these plans that have been submitted, with emphasis on single-family neighborhoods, but also looking at opportunities to include alternatives to single-family, whether they be townhouses or multiple-family, which addresses both the life cycle needs, the idea that your housing needs change over your lifetime and your circumstances, and also addressing attainability or the affordability of housing within Bayport and Twin Cities region as a whole. So, when properties annexed to the city, the city establishes a zoning designation for that. For the Bay Haven development, it's proposed to be established as a residential planned unit development district. For the properties that are not included within the proposed development, city staff is recommending those be designated as R1 single-family estate, given their size and the fact that they're not connected to utilities at this point. If there is a development proposal involving those properties at some point in the future, that can be revisited, but that would be processed, again, parallel to that process with the comprehensive plan amendment, except that this is entirely a City Council decision. So, the preliminary plat involving the smaller 28 acres of the site, they're proposing 35 single-family villa lots and 30 to 70 townhouses or multiple-family dwelling units. With the location of the property, it is subject to Washington County review and approval, which would include dedication of right-of-way for Stagecoach Trail, County Road 21. And as part of their application, then they prepared a traffic memorandum based on the study that was done for the ISD 834 project to evaluate what impacts this development would have, particularly at the intersection of 47th Street and Stagecoach Trail. The recommendations came back, said signal is not warranted based on the traffic that would be generated. It would be possible to look at a four-way stop, although Washington County doesn't favor that arrangement. They came back and said, "No, long-term, we're going to make this a roundabout." So, with the plat, they would be requiring the developer to dedicate right-of-way to allow for that future construction by the county. The other requirement from the county is to dedicate sufficient right-of-way for the future roadway adjacent to the property, which would also need to include space for a future trail that is planned as part of a regional trail corridor. As I said, utilities are available to the property. This does need to be coordinated to some extent with the ISD 834 project, and that's the connection point at where sewer is coming from, but water would be connected from both sides of the project so that the system is looped and provides multiple connection points so that there's less risk of water being cut off in the event of a breakage. There'd also be dedication of easements at the perimeter of all the properties being subdivided, and then over any utilities being created. The actual development plans themselves, so they're proposing two phases of development, the first being the 35 single-family villa homes. These single-family lots are each 8,000 square feet in area. Really, the defining factor is the 50-foot minimum width that fits the house plans that they provided representative designs for, and a maximum 40% impervious surface within each of these lots, which then correlates to the stormwater management for the overall development. What's changed since the concept plan is both the location and necessarily the designation of the specific user for the multiple-family component. It's moved more central to the project so that it allows for access on all sides by public streets, avoiding any need for a cul-de-sac. They've also changed the potential end user of this project. It's not defined at this point, but what the developer's proposing is that there would be a minimum of 30 dwelling units, which would be necessary to comply with the five-units-per-acre development density outlined by the comprehensive plan, up to 70 units total, that being a multiple-family housing-type development. The one limitation that the city would include on this would be a maximum building height of 35 feet, so that it's appropriate in scale to the surrounding single-family neighborhoods, and then also a maximum impervious surface limit of 45%, again, tied to the ability to manage stormwater throughout the project. The thing to understand here with the-- what's before the Planning Commission City Council tonight is that the approvals aren't specifically being given for Lot 1, Block 5. That needs to come back as a future application and a planned unit development stage application that would go through a public hearing process again. One of the things city staff and developer discussed in the week since the prior meeting was scheduled was the need to provide notice to the people buying homes in this neighborhood as to what's going to occur on Lot 5. So, city staff has outlined that there'd be a specific declaration recorded with each one of those lots so that closing, they're signing off and being made aware of the range of development types and density that can be developed on that property. The developer also stated they'd include that as part of their sales materials. They'd post a sign on the corner as you enter the development showing what's intended to be there so that there's full awareness of everyone as to what's planned to occur there, and what really needs-- is required to be there by the city's comprehensive plan. Obviously, we're dancing around the issue of avoiding what happened to the South several years ago with the Inspiration Development. From the city's standpoint, it's difficult. We can't necessarily force a developer to build something, we can regulate what they're allowed to build. And so, it's ultimately working together to ensure that it's communicated going forward as to the second phase of development. The other part that's significant with the project is the existing property is obviously significantly wooded and has a number of topographic slopes, steep slopes, wetlands, et cetera, kind of at the perimeter outside of what is the farmstead and kind of the pasture area of the property. The developer's setting that aside in a 13-and-a-half-acre outlot that would be preserved indefinitely or in perpetuity through conservation measures and restrictions, as well as drainage and utility easement. So, that effectively reduces the development potential of the site. That makes it work to have the single-family units in combination with the multiple-family units to achieve the density requirements set forth by the comprehensive plan. Addressing kind of the infrastructure portions of the project, streets and trails, all the streets within the development are to be public. The individual streets accessing the single-family lots are 50 feet of right-of-way, a 28-foot-wide section with curb and gutter on both sides. There would be a sidewalk constructed on one side of each of those public streets with no parking zones designated on the side of the street where the pedestrian way is to avoid any conflicts. And the developer's also extending a trail from Stagecoach Avenue, or excuse me, Stagecoach Trail through the development that would connect ultimately to Barker's Alps Park on the north high portion of the site. Number of things related to that trail, there's this property gap that exists between the plat within Baytown Township and this public right-of-way and the Inspiration Development. The developer is going to undertake a quiet title action to acquire that property, define it, and acquire it, and a portion of that would then be deeded to the city to allow for completion of this trail. So, as part of their project, the developer is required to construct the trail adjacent to the public street and down to this-- down to that property gap. City desiring to have that extended through to connect to Barker's Alps Park would make that a condition of approval. Developer is requesting that because of constructing that segment of the trail through the property gap be credited to their park dedication fees in offsetting the fact that they will undertake the quiet title action. The other trail item, Washington County's comments recommended the developer construct the trail along the east side of Stagecoach Trail from First Avenue North to the north plat line. City staff doesn't support that recommendation because the trail basically doesn't go anywhere at this point. There's no plan or timeline for when that trail would be completed. What's important is that the city will acquire the right-of-way for that trail so it's able to be constructed as an entire project once a schedule is determined and funding is determined in the future. Tree preservation, the developer looked both at kind of the perimeter of the site to the north and to the west, outside of their property boundaries, including the public rightsway also along the south, in surveying 701 trees. That number also doesn't include much of the area on the east portion of the property, down the slopes from the site on the lower portion about Lot A. With the plans that have been prepared, they're removing 273 trees, 154 of which are within the site, and you can see from the tree preservation plan, a lot of these are being removed from the right-of-way that's part of First Avenue North, as well as some of the just outer perimeter of the open area of the site, just expanding the buildable area of the property slightly to accommodate the house pad sites and reasonable setbacks from the edge of the woods, as well as in this area for stormwater management purposes based on the natural contours of the property. So, they would remove 16.9% of the trees that were identified through their inventory. Again, not all of those trees include the entire site. Based on the city's subdivision ordinance, they'd be required to plant 308 trees to replace those removed. What they're proposing is 29 less than required, so 279 with a mix of ornamental evergreen and ornamental trees. From a developability standpoint, that's reasonable. This is a fairly compact development. There simply probably isn't enough space to add those additional 29 trees within the site. The other thing that they are also working to do is identify significant trees within the site that could be transplanted to locations out of the way of development. So, some of those trees that are identified as being lost will actually be spaded out, replanted in the site, and warranted to survive through the development contract. So, the tree preservation requirements in terms of their consistency with the intent of the regulations are being satisfied. Again, this is a challenging site to develop, and staff doesn't see it as practical to add more trees than are being proposed through the landscape plan. So, our recommendation on the proposed development from city staff, including the comments of the city engineer and attorney with regards to the actions being requested, would be approval of the annexation of the properties based on satisfaction of the state statutory criteria, amendment of the comprehensive plan based on the expansion of the MUSA and land uses appropriate with the policies of the comprehensive plan, the approval of the PUD development stage plan based on consistency with the intent of the zoning ordinance regulations for development of residential uses within city of Bayport and recognizing the unique character of this property, and then approval of the preliminary plat as it complies with the subdivision ordinance. That recommendation was subject to 32 conditions. In discussions this afternoon with the developer's attorney, we are recommending an amendment to condition number 19, as highlighted, that would now read, "The developer shall undertake a quiet title action to acquire the apparent property gap north of Outlet B, Inspiration Third Edition, with a portion of the parcel being deeded to the city with the final plat of Bay Haven or as soon as practically possible." The intent there is not to limit the overall project from going forward while this trail corridor is completed. The trail corridor is definitely a benefit to the project and something the city would like to see happen, but it's-- will be provided for as part of the development contract. It may just take longer than moving forward with the single-family lots to have that result. But this gives the developer the flexibility to move forward with their Phase 1 project while still ensuring that the city will have that trail corridor completed in the time that manager is provided for in the development contract. So, city staff, including the attorney in our office, were comfortable with the proposed change, and we would make that part of our recommendation.
I want to introduce--
Yep. Leonard Pratt is here from the Pratt Homes to present their project and the elements of Bay Haven at Bayport.
Thanks.
Help me, sir. Actually, okay. Okay, because I moved the slides along a little bit. Technology challenged. Well, good evening. Thanks for serving the public, public purpose, volunteering to be commissioners, going ahead and running for office to be a mayor and council people. It means something. You know, this is America at work. So, I want to, first of all, congratulate your staff on being reasonable people to work with. We've had times to talk things through. We've been methodical with things, you know, as we go along, and I want to thank them both for being more than reasonable with us and as we've gotten there. I don't want to go any further without introducing the landowners. I'm sure you all know Jan Anderson and her husband Brad.
Hi, Jan and Brad.
And Chris and Jim Otto. It's their property, and it's marvelous property. I also have-- I'm going to start my presentation, but I also have with me Dwayne Sickich, who has assisted me in all the details that are part of this submission. There's a lot of them, you know. Also Jacob Steen, who's with Larkin-Hoffman, who's helped us keep track of the particulars of getting things done, you know, the legal side of it. And then also Pete Keely. Pete Keely is an architect, and Pete has designed over 10,000 units, apartment units in the Twin Cities. He's been at it for 20 years, and I've known him for almost that many years, but it's his building that we're going to be looking at, and we'll turn it over to him to discuss. But let me begin by playing a video here, a drone video. Oh, by the way, this is hard crack. You know, you got to sit here so I can see it. He's my partner, my nephew, but certainly my partner. So, I'm going to start, and I know you know where it is, but I thought I should show you this. Let's get that drone shot going. It's going to be really brief, but here it is. Beautiful. So, is Brad and Jan-- look at this. Isn't that amazing?
That's amazing.
But it's-- it's one of a kind. And thank you, Jan. Thank you, Jan, for saying yes to me. We consider it a privilege. And we sat our project right in the, you know, in the grazing land, you know, in the open pasture land, you know. Didn't take much to figure that out, right? And even with that, there's trees that had to be moved around. I thought everybody should see this. Let's move on. Thank you. This is our-- it's a family business, Pratt Homes, you know, boots on the ground. There's a picture of my brother Lowell and my new partner Art there. We've been at this for 52 years, and we've concentrated on the northeast area, which includes Bayport, you know, White Bear Lake, Shoreview, Stillwater, Lake Elmo, Woodbury. We've concentrated here. So, we've got, you know, we kind of know it like the back of our hand, in a way. So, let's move on from that. I want to mention one other thing there, that we're given builder license number one in the state of Minnesota by the Commerce Department, and it came about as efforts were around getting builders licensed, you know, keeping things in order back in the 80s when things were maybe a little disordered. I was president of the Minnesota Builders Association. We could see that the law was come where licensing was going to be required, and my brother Lowell undertook the project of getting a license law put together. We worked with legislators, legislators, and the builders worked collaboratively to put that license law together. So, when we were done, the Commerce Department called and said, "Brad Holmes, you got builder license one." So, I just mentioned that because it's somewhat unique. But we're going to build villa homes, and we're experienced building villa homes, you know. We counted about 800 villa homes in the east metro area. We've got a couple of projects that are still at the end of their cycle, and we got homes that you can go see, a villa home that's in the Royal Club in Lake Elmo, also at 21 Oaks in Woodbury. The 21 Oaks home is nearing completion, and those are homes that will be representative of what we're going to be bringing here. Those two homes, the one in 21 Oaks sells for 850, that's what it's listed at, and the one at the Royal Club is about 925, let's see. So, I'll come back to that market that we're serving, okay? But in any case, those homes are up and ready for people to see, and we're also finishing up a project in North Oaks called Spring Farm. And those homes start at about $1,002, go up to about $1,005. Now, that's North Oaks, different than Lake Elmo, different than Woodbury, and different than Bayport. But I just want to show you, not show you, I just want to explain, we're experienced, marking up, matching up the product to the setting that we're in. These are representative illustrations of the buildings, and these are targeted at people that are empty nesters, that have raised their families, that are looking at time differently. They want someone else to cut the grass, someone else to remove the snow, and it's a lifestyle decision. Many of these families have either cabins up north or maybe down, you know, a patio home or something in Florida or Arizona. So, this is a kind of a-- this is where-- Florida or Arizona. So, this is a kind of a, this is where they have their grandkids. This is where their heritage is. They want to stay home to this vicinity. That's where these villa homes work, have worked so well over time. It's a lifestyle choice. And this is just a listing of all those neighborhoods that we've built. Each of these neighborhoods all have a story behind them. One of the things that we try to do at Pratt Homes is when we pick new neighborhoods to develop, I look for, what is the story here? You know, what can we do to meld what we're doing with what naturally is here? And by watching the video or the drone video, you can see where Bay Haven has a story, a very powerful story. And it's in our best interest to mark up to that, you know, and to meld it to, because that's what people want when you buy a home. You wanna know what it is and where it is that you're going. So, that's just representative of the neighborhoods we've built. So, we've already heard about the proximity of this neighborhood to Inspiration, and that kind of is an overview there. You can kind of see. We can move on. And now we're focusing in a little tighter to what it is that we're doing. And the planner did a great job of explaining all this. It's kind of the same visual. We can move on. And this is a recap of the project scope. We've already talked about it. So, let's move on. Once again, these are villa photos, interior pictures of what the houses look like on the inside. This is a recap of North Oaks. We're wrapping up North Oaks now, but the interiors of those homes, once again, lifestyle centered. Other homes, we've got a total of about sixteen of these villa homes that have been developed over time. We give people choice. Each of these homes is custom designed. People decide which home fits their need best. So, that, this, these illustrations represented the range of choices within the villa, you know, design portfolio that we've developed. I'm tested. Once again, these are architectural renderings. This is the Madison Home. This is actually the home being built in the Royal Club at Lake Elmo. I put that in here so you can see. You could go over there and look at it. Keep going. Basically, what it is, it's a home that has a main floor master bedroom, and it has a great room, and it has a kitchen that's open to the great room. There's kind of an informal lifestyle here now. Nice finishes. And by the way, these prices are dictated by our customers. We don't come in and say, you know, this is, you know, this is what it costs. You know, the price of tea in China, no. This is directed by our customers. So, all these finishes sometimes can get on the higher end, you know, the paneling, the wood beams, the detail around all the built-ins. We do a lot of built-ins on our homes. We still have our own carpentry crews building these houses. So, Lowell and I started the business as carpenters, so we know the difference. Keep moving there. They all, well, in most cases now at Bay Haven, they'll have lower levels too, you know, where there's a rec room and other bedrooms for guests and family. I know that we'll keep moving here because of time, you know. I want to honor that. So, let's just keep moving. Now, I'm gonna stop my, obviously open for questions, but I'm gonna call Pete Keely from Collage Architects forward to describe the building, which he'll do now.
Thank you, Len, and good evening, members of the commission and city council. So, I'm Pete Keely with Collage Architects, and I've had the opportunity to know Len for twenty years, which is when I started my company, Collage Architects. I do have about thirty-five years in, so you're making me feel a little younger, but it's good. We specialize in housing and pretty much anything that anybody lives in, in the multifamily. So, townhouses, apartments, fifty-five plus, senior living, independent. We do a few single-family, but that's not our focus. Our focus is really to create homes for somebody that's in a little different, a little different scenario maybe than houses or the villas, which is why I think Len probably put in the call. So, I think one of, a couple of things that we really focus on as a company and our clients do as well is, these are really about creating homes, homes that are just slightly different. It's creating some more versatility, different lifestyle choices as the villa homes do. This is what we're thinking here, is probably very complimentary to the villa home in terms of maintenance, maybe a slightly smaller size. It is people who have a cabin. It's people who might have a boat. It's people who are, may have, they're not gonna be around quite as much, so they don't want the maintenance. Might be a little bit smaller. Anyhow, that's number one, create great homes. In order to create great homes, you have to have a great site. If you have a great site, don't screw it up. So, that was kind of first and foremost, is how do you actually take the idea of what that site has to offer and really work with it? And the second is really to create a very special place. And that's what we tried to do here in terms of the architecture and the layout. So, a couple of things in the multifamily world, and to create that place is to create an identity of the building itself and to really set it into the site so that it feels good. And I think that was kind of first and foremost of one of the things we were trying to do here. So, you'll notice in the building, it does have kind of this U shape with an appendage. That was really about some of the things that were happening with the grade. On the north side, it does create a courtyard. The courtyard has a terrace. That terrace is over underground parking, so we can kind of maximize the parking. But it also creates a great kind of community place. So, one of the things about this building that might be a little bit different than the villas is that these places tend to kind of have a sense of community because people are a little, there's a little bit more interaction here. You do share common corridors, but you also have common space. So, we'll go through the plans in a little bit, but that's why we start to site these, to create these outdoor places, not only the trails to get into town and walk, walk, but also places within the building. So, it's these series of small casual interactions that become really important to make these not just a home, but also kind of a community within that area. So, we really try to think pretty hard about that on the inside and the outside. That was kind of part of creating this shape, this series of the courtyard. And then I think one of the other things that we did is really to try to take the ends of the building and start to step them down. So, it is a three-story building. The three-story steps to two stories on the end, and I'll walk through that a little bit. Sorry for all the language. We'll get into the building, and I'll show you a little bit of that. But it'll step down on the ends. And I think the look of this was trying to go kind of prairie style, but I think what we wanted to do is really, when you look at the images, and the first thing Len showed me is you gotta see this video. Went out and visited the site. You really get the sense of the top of a hillside. You really get the sense of this place kind of overlooking. And that was kind of the idea, is to try to capture that in the roof form and the top of that, to really kind of give it a presence and an ambiance. That's the forward. Okay, thank you. So, just by the numbers, just, we'll kind of go into this real quick. There's basically about thirty percent one-bedroom units. The rest are two and above, are one-bedroom den and above. This is a mix of people who are gonna live here in this. Generally, it's the two, it's two bedrooms, but like we said, it's somebody with a cabin. It's somebody who might have a cabin and goes to Phoenix for the winter and wants something smaller. So, wide range of people who live here. Building materials tend to be very high quality in this. We want something that'll look good. These are people who are here lifestyle by choice and want to live in a, in a community like this. So, we, again, like Len said, we're trying to meet their needs. I'll confess, I'm one of these people. I'm a lifelong homeowner for a long time, thirty-five, forty years, and I'm an apartment dweller now for a lot of the same reasons that all the other people make it. But you want that kind of level of quality, that level of ability to get away, but you really want to feel like this place. And so, we can dive more into the details of that as we kind of go, but I kind of want to get into the architecture and the sighting. One of the big things on this was one, let's make a really strong presence as we're coming off of Stagecoach up into the development. This is what all the villa homes are gonna see. Everybody's gonna drive by this. We want that to kind of say, "Community." We also want to say, "This building isn't gonna be a wall. It's not gonna be a three-story building. It's gonna have a feeling of layering. It's gonna have a feeling that there's front porches that people can be on. There's individual porches." And so, that's kind of what you're seeing. That's kind of what we're trying to set up at this location right here. So, stone is the base. So, we're trying to have kind of that feeling of a natural outcropping of stone, quality materials, some front porches that people can kind of be on, and you're seeing out at the front, kind of at the base of the building. And then it steps back from a two-story kind of to a three-story expression on this end, so you'll see up on that top. All of these have kind of, instead of a wall of a building, there's some recesses within this. So, there's recesses for the porches. There's recesses up on top. So, we're not just kind of creating a wall. We're bringing the wall in and out so that there's different living arrangements, which we also find works great for the tenants and the residents because they also want to feel like they have a special place in each of these. I live in that unit. My unit is this one. It has this unique opportunity. That's why they make these choices. This is the front as you're kind of coming in. You can see off to the right of the image, that's the driveway that comes in in the parking area. And right where that blue car, that's where it kind of dips down low into the underground parking. So, this does have underground parking, extended deck so we can get some more in. I will also say, in this particular image, the site slopes from the back of the image to the front of the image. So, this is actually the low point on the site, which is kind of why we're bringing the parking in from this location. That's also why there's this retaining wall in front of it, but we're also saying this is where we've got the notification saying, "Bay," will kind of be this nice decorative sign, heavy plantings. This is actually the front door. As people are walking in, you'll notice this is a kind of three-story expression. You're kind of seeing the porches and the deck. We've defined the building in a couple different ways, but we've got kind of a two-story datum that wraps the rim of the building. So, on the left side of this, we have two stories carried up in stone. And then the decks themselves, they kind of have a two-story portion that you're seeing in white, and then kind of the recessed area up above that's kind of defining them. So, again, there's a lot of work to try to bring down the scale of it, but also to create a layering effect for personal space, kind of inside, outside, which just like all the villa homes, people like to have that relationship of being able to get on that, out on this deck. This is, this is done with sizing for considerable outdoor deck space. Excuse me. This is the back courtyard side. You can see on the two ends how it starts to step down from a three-story expression to a two-story expression where the hip roof kind of steps down to be two stories. And that's as it's starting to get back into the villa homes into the neighborhood. And then quite a large distance opening for this kind of terrace area. You're seeing the trellis in the middle, some fire pits. There'd be outdoor dining. There'd be grill areas. We often have a place to kind of like a congregate in a way, whether that's the fire pit or eating, or a lot of different varieties of doing that. All of this is yet to be programmed. We're kind of at an initial phase. As we go through this, we would kind of dial this in and say, "Who do we think is really gonna be here? What are the very specific things that they might want to kind of fine tune the amenities?" This is then wrapping around the east side. And again, I think you're starting to see kind of how it's stepping down as a two-story portion of the building that is the two-story to three-stories accentuated through kind of the change in color, the added roofs. I talked about on the balcony, it's kind of being two stories and then planting. So, we'll be able to plant the base. This is actually the highest portion of the site. So, the building is very close to grade, and this is gonna come back in a moment as we talk a little bit about height. This is the high portion of the site, and then it starts to slope away. And then this is probably the low portion of the site. So, this is as the, you know, the building is kind of flat. So, in one case, the building is closer to grade. In another place, it's a little further away from grade. What's happening on the right-hand side of this is actually some rain gardens, but you will see through the front of this that this does drop to from a three-story expression to a two. So, everything that's happening on that upper level is a little bit different than happening on the first two levels. A few more windows. Those tend to be the bigger units. We have combined units to create more of a penthouse-style unit on these ends. These are nineteen hundred and fifty square feet. They're gonna rent for probably five thousand dollars plus. They're gonna be great units, and they're gonna have long views, and they're gonna be kind of the crust of the hill. They're the top of the building. Running through the plans, this is the underground parking. It's basically a hundred parking stalls. One great advantage of this style of living is underground parking. It's warm. It's heated. It feels good to get in your car. No scraping. So, this is kind of a big deal. We also, so we want to increase the number of parking that's outside compared to, or I'm sorry, inside compared to outside. We have found in these projects that it is generally is not a two-to-one ratio that happens. It's more related to bedrooms than it is related to actual numbers of units. A three-bedroom unit is very different than a one-bedroom. Yes, you can have two people living in a one-bedroom unit, but generally, you're gonna have less cars the more one-bedrooms you have. So, I say that as we get into the parking counts, which are a little bit below two-point-oh, because we think this is actually probably overparked for the market at this level. So, we can come back to that one also. Getting through this, what you're seeing in the dark blue area is the common space. The light blue area are the units. You'll notice a range of these from about eight hundred and fifty square feet. That would be the smallest one-bedroom. And then it ranges, like I said, up to about nineteen hundred and fifty square feet as a more penthouse style. I'd say the sweet spot is between fourteen and sixteen hundred square feet. These are gonna rent for probably two dollars and fifty cents a square foot. Again, what's gonna really depend, it might be a little lower. It might be a little bit higher than that. It's gonna depend on the actual target market for this and the amenities and the finish package as well. And there may be a range in that. So, generally, what happens is we'll have a higher price point for the penthouse with nicer finishes, gas stoves, all the things you might expect on, kind of on the villa home side are gonna be in the apartments. Now, there might be some that are just tweaked a little bit less to provide a range of, a range of what's attainable. Second floor, more or less stacks over the first floor. We do have common storage areas. We do have some small little breakout spaces. I'm sorry, I missed kind of the main part in the middle here, which is the dark blue and the common space. These will generally be a fitness area. There will be places to host families for dinner. That's a big one. Common kitchen, so you can bring your family over for Thanksgiving if you want to, or have a small party room. But generally, what they're used for is actually for the community themselves to get together and hang out. They've done, we're just working on a fifty-five-plus building in the township of Mendota, which is based on another one in Mendota Heights, and have found that these become real communities. I mean, people really get to know each other, and these places actually are really busy. In the market rate world, they may be a little bit less, depending on what amenities you put into them. But the more that you work with the management team to kind of create the right mix, the more this really kind of sings as a community. Second floor, and then you'll see the third floor begins to step back. The ones on the three ends, the nineteen hundred and fifty, those are set partially in the roof. They'll be kind of attic-style spaces, but they'll have big broad views, big windows overall. So, that's the overall look. I do want to go through real quick because we talked about, that was the sixty-three unit version. I know what you're looking at right now is, is an idea of a range. So, that's kind of one upper end of the range. This is the lower end of the range to say, "What does it look like to be a kind of a townhouse style unit?" Now, this is thirty. To get thirty into here is basically still a three-story building. These are tuck-under-style townhomes. They're not attached. Attached townhomes wouldn't fit the density of thirty, which is kind of the minimum to hit the numbers that you want to hit. So, this means that there's three stories of building sticking out of the ground, basically the same height that we were just talking about. Now, on the perimeter, the earth can kind of berm up a little bit to kind of hide some of that, but it will still express itself roughly as a two and, two and a half story building. I want to talk a little bit about the height on what that also looks like. When we talk about stories versus height, and it's just something to think about now and as going forward, generally speaking, a story is eleven feet floor to floor. People want nine-foot ceilings. Structure's roughly two feet. Sometimes ten-foot ceilings are pretty nice for some of the upper units. That gets us to thirty-three feet. That's just the building. So, there's grade on the outside. It always wants to be above ground, not garden level. So, we don't want to bury these. We want the drainage. So, generally, it's looked at at average grade, and that works for a flat roof building to be under thirty-five feet. It doesn't work as well for a pitched roof building, because the pitch then wants to go up. So, going forward with this, I do want to just kind of make that note, that we believe the three stories are great, believe that tapering this to a two-story expression on the ends is great, but there is, would probably want to be some consideration about doing a building that's fitting of this, which is more residential with kind of a pitched roof in that as well. That would be probably the exact same thing on the townhouse. As we try to do this, these end up not being one-level living. They end up being garages and then one level of units, and then one level above. Same issue on the height, but then it's a different, slightly different profile of who's gonna live here because of their stairs, and you tend to live across stairs. I tried to fit, we did, just finished, completed a project in Badness Heights, which was a two-story attached car garages, and it fits about twenty units. which was a two-story attached car garages and it fits about 20 units. So if you want to take a look at what was done at the reserve at Sono. That style of townhome gets about, yields about 20, which is a little bit below where you're at, kind of for the numbers. So just wanted to kind of show where that was on the range between the two style of units. So I think with that, oh, maybe I'll kind of wrap back to the market and, you know, who lives here and why it's a good company. So the villa homes offer certain things, a little different parking arrangement, but they're bigger in size. They do tend to be, there are people who want that rent by choice. They tend to be people who are probably, the price point's actually probably not going to be far off the rental payments versus the mortgage payment, but it may depend on their situation of what they have cash on hand to get into something somewhat. Or there's someone who's taking money out of the homes that they have with the equity and using that and not worrying about taxes and insurance and having the apartment and the rent, which gives them freedom and flexibility to kind of come and go as they will. So it's, and again, not knowing the exact market or who the development entity is going to be on that, but you know, I've worked for countless numbers of developers that are kind of all in this category, where we're looking at, that's what it's going to end up being. We need a pretty high price point to make this work and what it demands. And what that demands is really nice housing. Len's going to set that parameter and that's what we've got here and hopefully that's what shows in the building that's here. I think that's the end of that part of the presentation. I don't know if you want to do questions now or wait?
Yeah, there's only Pete's up here, any questions? Let me explain a little bit before you ask, I mean, before I open it up. What I needed to do, I asked-
Len, can you go to the mic, please?
Pete, you can stay close here. What we needed to do is establish some parameters on the multifamily building. In other words, how does it look? And what would be an acceptable design detail to make it work here? As opposed to letting other people come in and show us what they would like, we took the initiative of having Pete design a building so that it illustrates his design features that he's gone through with you now. And I want you to know that. I want to, you know, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. No, we know where we're going, this, these are the design parameters. I wanted to explain that.
Can you be a little more clear, is this an actual, this is the plan? Because I feel like there's very little plan, other than a few pictures of what it might look like. So is, are you actually intending to do this or is this just an idea of what could be?
It's an idea.
Okay, that makes me a little more nervous, but anyways, okay, let's continue.
Okay.
Yeah, let's keep going with the presentation and then we'll do some questions.
Yeah, I'm going to introduce Jacob Steen.
Thank you. Hi Jacob.
Thank you Mayor, council members, planning commissioners. I promise I'm going to keep it brief. I just want to touch on a couple of items specifically related to the conditions of approval. As Pete mentioned, we would like some flexibility with respect to that 35-foot-high maximum with the multifamily. Like he said, we could probably, with this concept, we could probably get 35 feet, but it would be a flat roof and I think we'd be losing a lot of the character. It's really important to Len and Pratt Homes that we have a certain quality of build for this multifamily.
What are you suggesting for the height?
You know, I think that realistically, we'd probably be adding between six and seven additional feet. So, you know, three feet or maybe, I think 42?
What's about seven feet?
Seven feet?
That's 42.
It just, I think a couple of ways to do it. One would be 35 feet to the eve line. And then a lot of times we see it measured to the midpoint of the gable, which is generally seven feet. And then the other question comes about at grade. So that can be from the first level, that would be seven feet. But then, for instance, and I just want to bring it up, when you go down into the garage, that's a full level exposed. It only happens for 2% of the building, but at that point you do see the full level even though you're going down. So there's some accommodation and understanding where that is. Oftentimes we see it from the first floor level or we add three to four feet for average grade. And then you just take all the way around. So I would generally say if you added 10 feet to that and said from average grade to the midpoint of the gable is about right.
I don't know, there was a lot of numbers. Yeah, there was a lot of different numbers and a little confusing.
So would that be 45?
That would be 45 from average grade to the midpoint.
Perfect, thank you. Be flexible. Thank you. With respect to phasing, as you know, this is a multi-phase project. And the first phase is villas and the second phase is the multifamily dwelling. We understand that the city has some concerns about maybe some other developments in the past. And we've been discussing with staff and we hear you. You know, we're in talks with a number of multifamily developers. We're hopeful that within, you know, months if not weeks, we can have something nailed down. But we know that there's a lot of uncertainty in the market and we just want to make sure we have the flexibility. That being said, I've had a number of discussions with the city attorney today about the concerns that you have and have a proposal that I think will hopefully satisfy some of these concerns. Now, this villa section, we've got 35 homes. That's realistically about a two-to-three-year build-out for those 35 homes. And what we would propose, hopefully we're going to have this multifamily through the Planning Commission City Council in a matter of months, like I said. But what we would propose is that as we build through this villa phase, that the third, the last third of those villas, so the last 11 or 12 of those villas would be contingent on making sure we have a multifamily proposal for the city that meets the requirements tonight. We would be willing to work that into the conditions of approval as well as a development agreement. And we think that that's kind of a unique solution that would help satisfy that concern and address that. Now, it's, you know, it's a big risk on Pratt Homes, but it's while it's not our first choice, if we are unable to identify a multifamily developer, Pratt Homes would happily move forward with a townhome development at that 30 units at that point. Now again, we're going to work for higher density, but we know that we could still hit that peak density if we have to. And making that last third contingent on that multifamily piece, we think should address those concerns.
Explain what that means, that it's contingent on that?
Yeah, so practically speaking, as we go through the build-out, so the first, let's say 22, 23 homes would be permitted as they come through. The building permits for those remaining, I guess 11 homes, would be contingent on bringing forward a project. So understanding that, you know, a portion of this project could be on the shelf until we have that multifamily really forces us to be committed to finding that. And it really puts, you know, puts Pratt Homes' money where their mouth is.
Okay.
So really, shares that risk, you know, puts that risk on us ultimately, if that makes sense.
Why wait?
Well, yeah.
Why wait? Well-
It's not that they're waiting, I think they just don't have a plan.
Right, right. We have a plan.
But I mean, you don't have a builder, you don't have someone that wants to do it.
Right, we don't have a builder today. And as you know, there is some uncertainty in this market. We think that there's going to be some stabilization of interest rates, stabilization of building materials, but there's always uncertainties. And what we want to do is make sure that we have an opportunity to find the right partner. Anyone who buys one of these villa homes is going to expect a pretty high level of development on this multifamily piece. And that's really important to Pratt Homes, which is why we haven't found that right partner yet. We've had very lengthy discussions with developers, but because we weren't able to come to a meeting of the minds on the quality and the type of build that we would want to see, we are going to continue to work to find that right fit. And again, if we need to, Len is committed to building out townhomes at the quality that his buyers expect.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to present before we?
The only one, one last comment about the county right-of-way. And as staff summarized, at the last 11th hour, we got a letter from the county. And it was, I think it was just last Thursday afternoon or Friday, and they asked for a pretty substantial amount of right-of-way. And what they proposed is about 165-foot-wide roundabout at Stagecoach, which is about as big of a roundabout as you could ask for. As we've laid it out over our existing plan, that would lose potentially one, even two villa homes in addition to at least two or maybe even more acres of old growth oak trees, which we're, as you saw, we're trying to preserve as best we can. We're pretty confident that was a bit of a rush job by the county. We've already reached out and we're working on setting up a time to meet with them to right-size that right-of-way. We'd like to work, continue to work with the city engineer, with the county engineer and our engineers to make sure that we can just identify that. So what we would ask is with respect to that condition, I don't think you need to change that condition. We just want to make sure that the city gives us a little bit of leeway and we don't just write the county a blank check on that and that we actually work with them to right-size them. So with that, that's all, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, staff, I guess we'll give you the opportunity to have, ask any questions or make comments before we open the public hearing for, I think, nobody. Do you, does staff have any? Then I guess the Planning Commission Chair can open the public hearing.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing for the Planning Commission to, for anyone to come, comment on the, both the annexation proposal and the resolution on amending the comprehensive plan. If you would like to make a comment, please state your name and street address for the record. Anyone wishing to make a comment? All right.
I move to close the public hearing.
All right, I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Chair Kelly. So now I guess it's time for us to share our thoughts. Since typically we would have had a Planning Commission meeting first and you guys would give us a recommendation, I guess it makes the most sense for us to hear your questions and thoughts. And you may call up to the podium, anyone that you think can answer your question or there's staff here that may also. So do you want to start Beth, since you're right here next to me?
I have a couple of questions before I make comments. One I had is on water capacity, city engineer. Is, does the city have the capacity to-
And sewer?
For sewer and water to this development based upon the amount of up to, I guess, 100 and-
Five?
100 units, five units?
Five, it could be.
Possible?
Madam Chair and Madam Mayor, the, we have done an analysis and we've reviewed a couple of different options. The latest one that we modeled is 97 units. And that is, it's close enough to the maximum of 70 that I can say that we're fairly confident that even if it was a total of 70 in the multifamily, we'd be fine. However, the caveat is in our review that once that concept is finalized, we would want to go back and check the models one more time. But we can say fairly confidently that regardless, we can say with certainty that our models tell us the 97 units can be served. And then if there's another 10 or however many that were on the maximum, we're within reason that we feel like your systems, both sanitary sewer and water can supply the needs of the new development.
And you took into consideration a new school and things like that as well?
Correct, yes we did.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, if I can chime in on that. I'd like to hear from the developer on circumstances such as Woodbury and Lake Elmo and what they did for water conservation efforts or what was required in those locations, if they know at this point. As you all may know, we have severe irrigation that occurs in the summer where our water use is like seven times greater in the summer than it is in the winter, primarily due to irrigation. So any insight they could provide on that would be great.
Thank you, Matt. That was going to be one of my questions too, was the, I would highly encourage and like to see a stormwater reuse for irrigation.
I'm going to ask Dwayne Sickich to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Because he's in charge of doing the landscaping, plant types of grasses and-
Okay. What can you tell us, Dwayne?
So where the infiltration basins are located is sitting on a bed of sand. There's no chance of water being retained throughout this whole site. So we would consider some of the alternate uses that were, like native plants, low-water landscaping around both the villas and the apartment, including a fescue mix of sod that wouldn't need constant watering like a bluegrass sod. So that's kind of what, we'd look for, you know, xeriscate is the term that we use. Where you're not adding extra water to keep plants that aren't native alive in your, around your house.
Okay, that's definitely important.
And the current, the trees that we've got proposed right now, every single species is native to Minnesota. So it's not chasing water.
Jan would not have it any other way, right?
All right, thank you. My next question is about the declaration that was mentioned that would be a part of the, I'm not sure.
That continues?
No, on the homeowners who buy the homes. So they know about the, can you explain more about how legally binding that is and what?
Yeah, well, the concern is really about providing notice, right? So making sure that they're aware of what's coming. So what we're proposing is a couple of combination, or a couple of different tools in combination. So again, you know, even just looking at this picture, until this gets built, there will be, you know, presumably a coming soon sign. It would be attractive sign, but providing notice that there is a multifamily project coming soon. But then in the purchase agreements, we would have very clear disclosures about the fact that there will be a multifamily under these parameters. And this is something that in fact, we view successfully in a number of different situations. Whenever there's a, whether it's an adverse type of building or other type of development in the community where the community is concerned about providing notice. So not necessarily a legal, legally binding clause, but really a notice.
All right, thank you. And then I guess, so there were a couple allusions to kind of what the price point of both the villas and the multifamily housing would be. But I have to say I'm concerned. Bayport is a blue-collar town with a very large mix of people from different backgrounds and I love that, I think the community here loves that. And I just would like to hear more about what the price points are because I, this looks beautiful, but I'm a little concerned. I don't know how it fits into our community. And also I don't feel clear on how this fits into the Met Council's comprehensive plan and Bayport's comprehensive plan.
Let me address, maybe address this in this way. It's been my experience in most communities that a range of housing choices really matters. And I'm, I like the eclectic blend downtown here, it's cool, you know. People are- People are living affordably and I did a study of affordable housing in Bayport. And I shared that with staff. There's a lot of consternation about more expensive housing. We don't want to be out of reach of people's desire to live in Bayport, but why not give that upper end product a chance here in Bayport? In other words, it's okay to have a variety. And when I looked at that site, you know, Jan and Bradley's site, it will carry an upper end product there. And the neighboring community of Stillwater, for instance, you know, the same kind of a community that draws people there, many of them are upper bracket. But that doesn't mean that there's, there's not affordable housings. It's a blending of upper end and affordable housing.
Can I?
Yep.
I, that's part of my question is, it seems high for our area. Like what do you guys do research on whatnot for this area? How many people are looking for houses that are this expensive? And you're very, I don't want to say limited, but most of what the housing that you're saying is for empty nesters, 55 and older. So that's narrowing your.
Not a requirement though, right? Can you clarify that? They don't have to be empty nesters and 55 and older?
They do not have to be empty nesters.
No, they don't. But I'm saying a one bedroom or a two bedroom place is not going to probably be a family.
Well, I think about like my children who are in their twenties trying to find a place to live is difficult too. So, I mean, it's kind of that end of the spectrum would want a one bedroom or two bedroom as well.
But could they afford?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. They're living in a place in Milwaukee right now and I'd love for them to come here. Anyways.
But anyway, I just want to know, like, what is your research?
We haven't actually heard the price points either and I think that was your original question. So could you clarify that first? What are the actual price points for the villas and what we're envisioning for the multifamily?
And I know that's a guesstimate right now.
Right.
Or not, I'm not asking for a firm number, but I do want an idea.
Well, the villas, we should have a good idea, right?
Yes. Let me explain again. When, we've been at this, in this northeast area for 52 years. And I have, we have built collectively, our company, to this market. I have had any number of people over the years ask me, Len, is there any chance that you could come down to the river towns? Stillwater? Bayport? I, I want to live closer to my boat and the recreational activities around the river if I don't have a boat. I'd like the restaurants and I'd like to be able to spend time down there. Instead of driving from what I'll call Minneapolis-St. Paul down here and then driving home at night, why can't I just live here? I'm confident, this is at my risk. It is, it is. But I, I pointed out, the reason I want to do this, I said there's two homes right now, you know, in, one of them in Lake Elmo. It's a finished Madison villa product that's listed at just over 900,000. We've built 40 villa homes over there, okay? Now, that's a golf course community, but still nonetheless, there, there are people that are in what I'll call that retirement, got to get something that's, so that it's easier to care for. These are typically upper management people. Some of them are second generation wealth, in other words, it's been passed down. And they're investing in a house because it's stable for them versus the stock market that's going up and down. But bottom line, I'm confident and it is at our risk, but I can go down through all the communities. I listed them, that's why I listed them.
Right, but I'm just talking about like what do you do to, when you choose an area? How do you decide, okay, I think we can sell?
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Build 50 or whatever houses.
It, it's a visceral thing. After having done this.
Okay.
And I go in and I know there's market studies, could have a market study, but in the end, it's our risk. I am confident that when we put this up, people are going to say, I want to live in Bayport, at Bay Haven. And in they'll come. Now, listen what the positive on this is. Have you ever looked at the tax revenue on, on all of this? Okay?
I'm aware because I pay a lot of taxes, so yes.
And what happens is it kind of rejuvenates things. I was in Hugo, Minnesota. People thought, Len, you can't sell anything over a modest price in Hugo. You know, back when we got started there at Victor Gardens and at Fable Hill. And I'm going to explain what we did is we, new, new construction is expensive to do. The products, the labor, the land, the development costs. By the time you're all done, you can't really, and that's what that report I, I shared with the mayor too, is that affordable price band, it's literally impossible to hit brand new. So you might as well do something nice so that that embellishes the community. It'll, it'll ripple around. These people will be up here coming downtown here to attend, you know, to eat, to attend events, to, to be supportive of the, you know, the public purposes here. And through their tax valuations, they're going to be making a significant investment, you know, in the local community and schools, by the way.
Yeah, I was just trying to find, I had communicated with someone way early on in this whole process about what kind of housing would be the best fit, right? What, what's needed right now? And I can't remember what her name is and what, what, what a. Organization is with, the one that would, you know, know like what the housing needs are.
Housing link?
No, it's literally like a county department and I can't think of it. But anyways, I couldn't find her email. But she said, anything is going to sell. She was, had no hesitation. So I'm not worried about that either.
Sorry.
But no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm not worried about selling. What I'm worried about is the whole country and Minnesota specifically has an affordable housing problem and our community has an affordable housing problem. And I, I think what you have proposed here is beautiful and wonderful. I'm just, I don't know that as a community member, as a citizen of Minnesota, this is the direction that I think, I, I, I believe you, this could sell. But how is this helping the people who need housing in Minnesota and the unhoused people who live in Washington County? What are you doing or what are we as a community doing to help those people?
You know what? You can join me and I am working on a way of home, supplying homeless people houses. It's a different whole perspective here now, you know?
Well, I, I have worked in housing for a number of years and so I'm familiar with all of that. But the problem is, is we can't, we can't get a, a hotel turned into housing in Stillwater and we can't get the people who work in our community housed. And so I just am, I just want to. I just want to know how $900,000 villas, which are gorgeous and I would love to live in those. One floor housing, I would love it, but how, how is that helping our community?
Well, you're giving a, a choice of a place to live in your community, as charming as it is, you know? And once again, my experience, they're going to, it'll be a net plus to the area to have, have these people move into Bayport. They're going to fill your places with the ability to take and afford things, the ability to take and volunteer. I, I guess, in America, it's always been a matter of choice and I support that choice. And I too am sensitive though to the affordable issue and I spent some time studying Bayport, I did.
Yeah.
I would love to see that.
Yeah, and I have the same concern as you did, Beth, and he made, he made a very good point and he did do that study, that Bayport does its, does a lot of that job of, of supplying affordable homes because we have a lot of smaller, I mean, he did the study and he showed us, look at how your housing is right now, is that you have a lot of affordable small homes, right? And as those, that older generation moves out, then some newer people are moving in. But we do have a gap on that high end, you know? We don't have those. But, and then we have, you know, inspiration is, is a step above, I'd say, you know, maybe some of the other homes in, in.
Down by the lake.
Yeah, and, and we also have the river homes.
There's a river.
It's a lake, technically. So I don't know, I, I was, I felt the same way. I was really like, we need to do more for affordable housing, but I, I have slowly become convinced that this is actually a good fit for us and I think it's going to really make Bayport shine even more because we are going to have different levels. And I like that, I hope the multifamily has, you know, as they're suggesting, some smaller units that are more affordable, but still nice, you know, high quality. People don't always need a ton of space, they just want to live in a nice place, right? So.
Mayor, just to put the housing into context, so I was looking at the 2018 comprehensive plan, which is when the city last looked, the housing from a policy standpoint. So at the time, there were 921 homes in Bayport and by the qualifications at that point, 721 or 78% qualified as regionally affordable. So available to households with less than 80% average median income. The goal for the city from the period, from adoption of the comprehensive plan through 2030, was to develop seven new units. It's not a requirement, it's a goal. We recognized in the comprehensive plan that it's very challenging to do new construction. You can't build the access to Stagecoach Trail and have affordable housing or extend the utilities and meet all the other requirements that go with new development. So what the comprehensive plan outlined was a number of areas adjacent to downtown where the city would allow for higher density housing to be developed. That creates the opportunity for density to lower the price and spread the costs out. Redevelopment also presents greater opportunity for grants and other financial assistance to be brought bear against those costs to, again, make it possible. But the other thing the comprehensive plan emphasized was the need to maintain existing houses in Bayport as supplying that affordable component, either from an ownership standpoint or a rental standpoint. So again, the goal for the city is to provide a range of housing. This is obviously hitting the top point because of the uniqueness of the property and the costs involved with new development. But while still having a real substantial base of what would be defined as affordable housing. I've worked on projects in other communities where it's affordable and when you're talking about it, it doesn't sound affordable when you're talking $1,600 worth of rent. You know, the, the context is just off and it's not something the city can address on its own through its land use controls and decision-making, especially on a new build project like this.
Really good points. Thank you, Dan. Do you want to continue with your, or do you have more of that?
Sure. I guess the only other question that I had was on this outlot. That cannot qualify as the park. It's just land that would be, never would be. It's just too, it's not, it's steep, is that?
Very steep.
Steep and?
And would that be set up to be? Yeah.
Conservation?
Making a box on.
Yep, Outlot A, which surrounds all the development units to the west, north and east, that will be retained by the homeowners association for the development. It's not being credited towards park dedication or being accepted by the city.
And would there be anything that would limit them from somehow trying to develop that in the future?
The intent would be to deed restrict it so that it can't be further subdivided and you cannot construct structures.
There's no way you could, well, maybe you could build on it, but it doesn't seem like it could. I think if you could, he would have, right?
You can build on anything, but it involves cutting down the trees and massive grading and.
Yeah.
It's not practical.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm up. I appreciate the understanding that the risk that's taking to develop such a beautiful site. What I'm thinking about is inspiration and the greater than 15 years it took to get to the point that it's at now. Understanding there's some circumstances in the last 15 years that have impacted that type of development economically that's happened in our world around us. But what I'm wondering, this is a question for Len. All the projects in over 52 years, you've been doing this. I'm thinking about inspiration, like I told, like I had mentioned, and then the future of this site. Have, have you run into a situation where you could not finish a project?
Good question.
No. I've hung in there. Threw it all.
Through, through the housing crash.
I did.
That's what happened.
Yeah, that was, that was the initial one, yeah.
And I'm familiar, I'm familiar with inspiration. I, I didn't build there, but I was familiar with its origin.
Many people did build there. Except you.
We had a multitude of builders.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. My, my initial reaction, why I, I was, I was offered an opportunity to build, build an inspiration. But I thought, at the time that it was going in, once again, following intuition, I felt that it was a little bit farther out there for this kind of a community to take and, and build at the pace. I knew it would come along, you know, it, it's a good idea, but the pace, timing wise, would expose, you know, to the economics of, which really kind of hit the reality of it. If, if you've had, every day I wake up and I wonder if I'm going to, you know, have enough work for our, our carpenters and, and I understand what it means to financially commit. And I have kind of, I wasn't born with this, but I have kind of a future look at what's going to happen on the horizon. I do. You've got to live with it to know what I'm talking about. And I just was a little uneasy at that time with everything that was being proposed. It wasn't that it wasn't a beautiful concept and in the end, it's completed, but it took that massive adjustment and that was a big downturn that hit it broadside, you know? And by hook or crook, it emerges. Now, we're in a different day right now here. It's a different day, you know? And we're here on the edge. That's, inspiration's behind us right now. We're looking forward now to this opportunity. If you drive up and down this, these river towns, both in Minnesota and Hudson, or, excuse me, in Wisconsin, tell me, how many of these villa, brand new homes are there that would really be in competition with what's going on right here?
I don't know, I can't shop for a home that.
No, I'm going to. I'm going to tell you, there aren't any. There are other things you can buy in the river towns, can't? Stillwater's got plenty of those condos and so on. Well, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about what we're doing right here. So I've developed an instinct on this. And it's at our risk, my partner, our risk, that this is going to work. And if I hadn't built 850 of these homes for people that are at this same price point, I, I wouldn't. I, I've, I've learned by the school of hard knocks, you know? And I have completed every project I've started.
Would you, sorry, just to build on that.
Go for it.
So I, I know you're aware of inspiration.
I am.
But because the multifamily thought, ideas came so much, that's I think where we're all concerned.
Yeah.
Because it came so much later, the homeowners couldn't tolerate it.
No.
So how do you, how do you temper expectations of the homeowners around there?
You make it very clear right from the beginning, this is a multifamily piece of property. And you put it in the purchase agreement where they're acknowledging that, they've been told that. You have a sign there. And you can actually put it in a deed or in an HOA acknowledging that so no one can come back and say they weren't told, okay? And I'm confident with that. Listen, if my, our, our villa buyers are going to have to drive by that vacant lot and I'm going to have to do a lot of talking about what the potential is. So I have all the motivation in the world to get something up and underway. And I'm, you know, I, this marketplace is adjusting, it is, but we're gonna come out of it. It it's gonna come out, it'll it'll come out, and where do people, where do people wanna live? Well, they're gonna wanna live right here at Bay Haven. They will. The east side migration here is gonna settle right there.
The owls are gonna move there.
Save their pennies.
Yeah. Well, anyway.
Alright, you have another one? Do you have more questions?
I I do. First, a comment. The location of that multi-use site, you can't avoid it. From what I'm, from what I'm seeing, when you drive in from Stagecoach, right? It is the first thing you see is the multi-use site, so it's not something that can be avoided. You the, as developing for the initial homeowner that is gonna buy that first site, they can't not avoid it, right?
We've talked a little bit. You take a look at the land plan, and Dwayne has been working really hard to get that multifamily building position, remember when we came in, it was on one end? Well, we went in there and it, and it, you know, fire protection, you can't get around the backside, so it needs to have a route around it for protection. And that's where we started really focusing in on the scale of this, the scale of it. It cannot overwhelm, and that's where Pete comes along and he listened to us. I wanted those outside corners dropped. You saw that beautiful building, that's not an inexpensive building to build. If you look at apartment buildings, you know, they go straight up and down. Where he has set back that upper level around all of the corners. And the articulation that exists going down the the road, that's exactly what I said we wanted. And he got it, see? And that's what we're showing to perspect, we're showing this right now. To prospective builders and developers, we're showing this. And I don't.
You haven't had any takers?
Oh, well, I can't say this because I've got more than, you know, more than one person is really interested in this.
Okay, that's good to hear, cause that would make me very sad if you were proposing this and then when it comes to someone who's actually going to build it, they build a big old box.
Another reason I've got Pete Keely here, guess what? He's got clients that understand this higher level of design.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'd like to make an announcement, but it's premature now, but it's not like we don't have candidates. Because those that are in the know that see this as what I'll call an attractive building, they're showing up.
Thank you.
Last question I've got is, I don't know if we heard price point yet, have we talked around it?
Yeah, we still have not heard.
Further. If we're all thinking it, or at least.
I'm assuming price point on the multifamily.
Both.
So that will be developed, market studies, and so if the idea is that there isn't the ability to afford it. These numbers will change, or if there's more ability to afford, they will also change. I will say comparable projects in this range, based on how this was modeled. One bedroom's probably about fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred.
You're saying a monthly rent?
Monthly rent.
Cause these are all gonna be rentals in your mind?
Correct, these are rentals, not condos, so the eight fifty, nine fifty, wherever the town, I mean, so. That's a a purchase, right, and so you need the down payment, these are, it's gonna be first month, it's gonna be, you know, there's some additional fees, there's generally dog fees and cat fees and some other things. But somebody coming in can, is probably gonna be, is gonna probably start at fourteen hundred. They will range from first floor to third floor, third floor is usually higher. There tends to be some units that are kinda maybe on the inside corners that are a little less desirable, so even on a square foot, an eight hundred and fifty square feet. You know, it's gonna probably start about fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred, that's the range, two bedrooms about two thousand, upper twos, so twenty eight hundred, twenty nine hundred. Then when you get to the two pluses, that's where it starts to kind of escalate, because then you're, there are better fridges, there are better appliances, there's a lot of kind of betterments to it. So that'll probably be in the thirty five hundred to four thousand range.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Is there a vision for it to ever be like condos instead of, cause if you deal with, now you have to have a rental management company and things like that, right? And that makes me nervous too.
Correct, so, oh. Yeah, so I think that's a fabulous question, you want somebody who is a long-term operator who owns, you know, and so that's great questions. When this comes back is to ask their track record, there are very good management companies who take care of things, who are very good about it. That's who you want, you want the long-term.
So do we have control over that, is it, who who the rental management company is gonna be, I don't think we do.
The developer.
You have, you have, oh, the developer, but those are certainly questions that you can ask as they come in. A lot of the development entities are also management companies as well.
They are, okay.
Company, so. At this price point, they're gonna be the same, so I would also say that at, yeah, at this price point. The tenants also are gonna have expectations as well, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's another question.
I just, for us, so really, we're beginning talking about phase one, right? That's what we're kind of talking about first. Phase two is the multifamily, which I really do, I mean, we we do need that. And I don't, I don't think it's his job to provide affordable housing and all that stuff. Because a new build is super expensive, I do, I do get that, so I I think. I think we do have affordable housing in our, in our city, and this isn't the place that's gonna provide that, so, in any case, but. I I just. I I like the multifamily thing, and I feel like that's. A puzzle piece that is up in the air that we all seem kinda nervous about. The the first part and the houses seem good, but, so I don't know, I know we're going with this first section and trying to. Annex and get everything set up for that, but. What if just those things are done and then this other portion isn't, I know that, I know we said we could put something in the contract like. Okay, they can't start building the last twelve until this multifamily housing is done, I mean, is that something reasonable that the city would?
Mayor.
Implement?
So Commissioner Siegfried is correct, basically, you're looking at approving the overall development, which includes Lot One, Block One. As a building site for something in the future, that conceptually is this beautiful multiple family building. That needs to come back with full plans, architecture, floor plans, parking, landscaping, lighting, all the details, and that has to come back through the planning commission. So it's really difficult to, you know, address that. The discussion you've all been having is fascinating because you want the details of the entire project and it reflects this strange balance that, you know. Partners, development is partnership between cities and the private sector. Cities kinda gives you the direction of what you go there, we'll provide the streets and the infrastructure, you take all the risk and build it, so. It's the challenge that the planning commission and developer work through as part of these discussions. So we we can't answer all the questions about Lot One, Block Five. The developer's proposal to limit the number of building permits that would be issued, being that they're offering it, I think it's workable. I wouldn't have recommended the city require that, just it creates this weird dynamic where you're artificially, you're saying, well, you can develop this. But now you're saying, well, you can't, you have to wait and do this at the same time, so it inserts the city into the private market in their risk. But if they wanna offer it and add it as a condition, then we can certainly do that, and then it'd be up, the burden would be up to them to come back and argue that they can't or cannot meet that, so.
Can I just ask a follow-up of that? If we. Vote no, if everybody votes no at proceeding at this time, until they come back with a more developed plan. It's that, then it's Pratt Homes and whoever the future, whether they wanna go forward with this or not, is that kind of?
Mayor, that's correct, because this is first and foremost an annexation, so the city has ultimate discretion to say, we want this in the city, we don't want this in the city. The second thing is you have a comprehensive plan amendment and zoning establishing what the allowed uses, that's purely policy on behalf of the city to say yes or no.
So we could choose to annex, well, I can't, but people can choose to vote to annex this land. And then amend the comprehensive plan to say what we hope goes there, but we can't say they can't build there.
So as you're progressing down the decisions, so the the annexation, so now it's in the city. Okay, now the comprehensive plan says it should be this land use, it's zoned this subject to these standards, the discretion the city has gets less and less to say no.
Okay.
There is more because this is a planned unit development, cause otherwise they should all be eighty foot wide lots, twelve, you're gonna have to grade the entire site and do all kinds of things. But. The further down that pyramid that you get, the less ability to say no.
Okay.
Matt, you look like you had something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so part of the the second phase obviously is the multifamily, right? And because of the density requirements, future land use wouldn't allow potentially for villas to be placed there, right? It will have to be multifamily, if that's any concern.
Or minimum thirty dwelling units.
At a minimum of that, yes, that would still be multifamily in theory.
Yeah.
And that kinda goes back to the the notification portion of the declaration, the HOA documents and the sign on the property. Ultimately, it's the city council that has to be able to say, no, this must be a minimum of thirty units up to. And be able to stand up to anybody in that area that opposes that. Inspiration didn't have the same constraints, the the density could be met without a multiple family point. The city's obligations to the regional plan under the comprehensive plan mandate that type of density on that property.
Alright, thank you, questions, Colleen, are you finished with your thoughts?
I'm good, yeah.
Okay. Katie, do you wanna start on that end, do you have any?
Well, a lot of them were already asked, the water and sewer was one, especially like with the new school, cause kids like to flush toilets more than. And then the price points they answered too, so I don't really know if I have much more. I mean, I guess I would really like to know if. This apartment's beautiful and I don't see just old people moving there, my brother-in-law who is twenty six years old is in Woodbury right now, and he probably would love that here, so. Close to family, close to pickleball.
He's too young to be playing pickleball.
You're never too young to play pickleball, a nine-year-old that does it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ethan, do you have thoughts or questions or?
Oh, yeah, I do, I mean, obviously, city staff and the attorneys and everybody else have gone through this extensively, I don't see. I I could care less what the price points are, like he said, it's completely on his. You know, it's his risk to sell them or rent them, or, you know, I don't think city should get involved in that at all, cause that's not really our role. I think if you're following the rules and the water and sewer can do all the stuff and we're doing all the things that you're supposed to be doing, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. Especially with the taxes that it will bring, I know that Bayport is built almost completely out, I mean, obviously, we have to annex more land to build in this town, so. To me, it's a, it's a no brainer, one thing I do, I'm curious about though, if they are apartments, how does the tax, how does that work? Like the taxes on like.
I think it's the building owner has the asset and they would pay the taxes, yeah, right? A lot of nodding out there, yeah.
I was just curious about that, I don't know if it would be a benefit to have that or have the townhomes. Or would those be rentals as well, or would the, if they go with a townhome, would that, would you sell those, or would those would be rentals as well?
No, purchased, yeah.
Those would be for purchase, so I don't know if there's a benefit one way or the other for the city on that financially, but might be one thing to look at. If it's.
Okay.
Financially better to have more units, more, you know, taxpayer.
Do you have a comment?
I I do, it's kind of based on the value, so the value of the townhomes, depending what the the for sale of that versus the value of the. Apartments and having more apartments, twice as many apartments, they at the same value is twice as much.
Okay.
So, just real rough numbers.
Yeah.
We really are lacking in apartments. So I kind of, I mean, I like the idea of ownership, but since these are high-level apartments, it doesn't bother me as much, I think. And and I just wanna make sure we have a good management company, but. How much control we have, so.
No, again, I don't, well, like, like they said before, it's like, they're spending four thousand dollars a month, it's not like they're gonna have some, you know.
Well, my husband, my son has lived in places that are very nice, but the management companies are not that great, yeah, so.
Well, again, I don't think we, I don't think we have control of that.
I know, and that's what makes me nervous, I don't want people going, oh, I'm never gonna live there, cause it's a horror, they don't fix things and the lights flicker and the whatever, you know.
Somehow, I'm guessing.
No, they generally just complain about it, and they don't know what their rights are to get it fixed.
Yeah, need to talk to you.
Just, yeah. Just from experience.
Yes, go ahead.
I think if gentleman's been in business for fifty two years, I think he has a pretty good track record.
Yeah, but he's not gonna do the bill, the multifamily.
Well, I think he's gonna choose somebody.
Yes, I would hope so, and.
Going to be.
Yes.
Probably pretty good.
There isn't anybody more concerned about the the developer of those multifamily homes than Art and myself.
Okay.
Cause I've got an answer to all of the thirty five people that are buying Villa homes from us. And that's why I'm taking a little time to make sure I get it right, okay? And we're off to a good start here.
Lynn, do you wanna give us a little more information while you're up there about what happened with the Ebenezer plan and why we're already, we're at another point? Because we didn't get any background on that in the packet.
Ebenezer was in the process of picking out and selecting a new architect. And when the new architect came, what they did is they absolutely filled. I mean, from one, from shore to shining shore, shore, the site. And I said, we cannot have those, the building that close to the outside lines of the street curb and sidewalks. We've gotta reduce the size of it, and we've gotta step the corners down, this is exactly what Pete did. They weren't willing to do that, I have nothing against or, you know, that's a great alternative, and I pursued it. But the scale of their build, they needed a bigger building. And they said they're gonna, you know, nice site, they told me, but they couldn't get their size of a building in there. So that's why I, I, once again, I I cut that off because. To me, the most important thing is to get this thing to the right scale. That that's, that's what really mattered.
It's interesting, cause I I was just curious, how many units are in that Zavago in Stillwater?
Forty.
Yeah, so why couldn't they do that?
It's not their building product.
Oh, I thought it was Ebenezer, oh, they managed it.
Yeah, and as I, as I peel, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, come on up and explain that, cause I was like, wait, they have a small one, why?
Yes, so that's a product that Ebenezer manages, but it's owned by a different company, it was built by a different company. The product line that Ebenezer wanted to move forward is called Astoria. And that has large, very, very large units, even larger than what Pete had proposed, and so the building just crept up and up and up. And we couldn't have that massive behemoth up against the villas.
Okay, I appreciate that.
We both win our ways, huh?
Yeah.
Take your five pounds of potatoes and, you know, it didn't fit.
Thank you, John, you're up, I think, if Ethan's done.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we all know.
I don't wanna be redundant here, so early on in your presentation, Mr. Pratt, you talked about the owners would sort of drive what you're going to build, so. So for example, and if if Michelle scrimped and saved her pennies and and chose to build sort of a high-end nine hundred thousand dollar villa. Would the, and I came in and said, you know what, I wanna, I can't afford to do what Michelle did, I wanna. Scale things back, maybe not as high-end finishes and stuff like that, can somebody come in? In a, in a lower situation, you know, more of a six hundred thousand dollar price point? Or is it gonna all, all be built out to that? Or is it gonna all be built out to that degree of finishes and?
There wouldn't be a six-hundred-thousand-dollar home there, because with the time, you add up all of the costs just to get things underway. But that doesn't mean that there isn't a range. You know, the range is probably gonna sit, I told you, there's an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home in Twenty-One Oaks. In that community, the range, when it's all done and said, was about two-hundred-thousand dollars, you know, from where it started to where it finished. And that one sits right in the middle today. And I'll say this about the costs of new construction. This is another battle we've got, you know? I've seen the costs go up, and yet I've had the buyers stay with it, you know? And I know there's a point in time where it gets to be too much, but by and large, I'm gonna come back to your question.
Sure.
About two-hundred-thousand around that median, okay?
Thank you.
And that's based on size and some of the specifications that go in.
So is nine-hundred probably the minimum? So we're looking at one point two, one point one down to eight-hundred?
Yeah, something like that.
Fifty?
Yeah, that's what we're imagining there. You know, and that's parallel to what I did at the Royal Club in Lake Elmo there. You know, that former three M golf course there?
And if you could stay up for my next question, it just looked like with some of the elevation drawings, are there gonna be some that are slab in terms of the villas and some lookouts, some walkouts?
There'll be some lookout, but there'll all be walkout or lookout because of the topography there.
Wait, there were some.
Okay, I stand, excuse me. I apologize. There are three on grade.
Okay.
Because of the grade. And we're not, you know, we offer those too, and there are certain buyers now that want that.
Sure.
So.
My next thing was about the elevation or height restriction. At what point do we get in trouble with our ladder truck not being adequate? Do you know that, Matt? I know our chief's not here. I would hate to build something.
Well, we serve Botwells, so how is that?
Yeah, based on Craydale and Botwells, I assume that the ladder truck's already built to reach all of those spots.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good question, though.
Yeah. What, go ahead.
No. Matt, you seem fairly confident that our i's are dotted and t's are crossed as much as they can be in terms of making sure that multifamily gets built out as it's been proposed to us. I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but this is.
But I'm gonna put words in your mouth.
I am, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so Councilmember John Dahl, the only stipulation would be they are asking for the potential for a wide range, right? Obviously, thirty-town homes is different than the apartment complex that was shown. Most of that is due to they're not exactly sure what there is going in there. So from that standpoint, yes, some form of multifamily will be required to go in there due to having to meet density requirements.
Okay.
What that will look like in the end?
We'll be back proposing it.
Right.
And I'm giving you an understanding of what I'm expecting it to be, because my clients are expecting that to be too.
Then my last thing is more kind of just out there. I grew up in this area, I think I talked about it with you guys last time. I grew up going there as a young child to the Kohler farm and getting vegetables out of the little shack that I think still sits there right now. I would love, and I don't want to put pressure on the Andersons, but if there could be some sort of ode to the Kohlers and the Andersons, the recent stewards of that property and remembering what the history is of it. And I imagine Mrs. Kohler, little old woman, giving us vegetables and what she would think of all this now. Your presentation's been fantastic, it really has been.
How about when Joa gave you thirteen years of corn and she would pull one out? I got my way to save the barn, save the windmill, that's where the pump is.
Yep.
There's a windmill that came out of that pump.
Makes sense, yep.
Yeah.
So.
But it's too expensive.
Dang it, but.
But any other ideas you want some?
Maybe Anderson Path or Kohler Way or something like that.
I think that Kohler would be a good thing. We don't, the Andersons don't need to do it. We were just fortunate enough that we came in there after months and God. And the only reason we got it, we had to write a letter, and it was just that we were the only ones that wanted to buy it and keep it as a farm.
Unfortunately, nobody probably heard you that's watching on TV, but, um, that's okay, Jan prefers it that way.
It begins by the name. It's Bay Haven, and that's to honor Chan and Brad's horse farm.
And one of the street names is like a horse name, right? Like a type of horse that you?
The Kohlers really, they homesteaded that.
Can you say what Jan said into the microphone? The Kohlers?
The Kohlers homesteaded that. The Kohlers homesteaded that.
It's three generations.
So is there a reason, like, would you like to, and this is probably a detail that's not necessary at this point, but naming that street something different is on the?
Kohler? Yeah, well, Kohler, it'll be it, it'll be.
Do you like that? I mean, that's up to you guys, so, okay. Okay, that's something we can work out later, probably, right? But it's easier to spell, I think, than that, where the horse word is very.
It is.
I don't even know what it is.
And I'm all about, once again, what's the story here? And I want to honor it.
I'm barely, I'm barely old enough to remember that stuff. I was a young child. But, no, your presentation's been great. You talked about your instincts and your vibe, and I do have a good vibe from you guys. And I are hearing us and taking this seriously. And I appreciate all the work and effort you've put into this professionalism, so.
Thank you.
John? Yeah, I, this has been a long time. We've had many conversations, right? Yeah, and I do appreciate, I appreciate your history of how long you've been doing this and your dedication to quality, all of that. I think that's great, and I think Jan wouldn't have chosen you if you weren't that kind of a builder, because I know she was very particular about that. So anyways, it's, there's still some unanswered questions that are making me still a little nervous. I mean, you've been trying to put us at ease, which is your job, right? I, I guess I want to get a little bit more input. I don't know if it's from staff or what, but like, I, one thing that concerns me is the county's right-of-way with the roundabout, right? Because that would be huge. If they are uncompromising on that, you're gonna lose probably two. I can't imagine one would do it, but I would think you'd probably lose two of your sites, right? So I, can you?
Is the roundabout here?
It would be like here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a picture of what they proposed?
Yeah.
We, no, we just have, I've just put a big circle on the map.
We're just trying to.
That's probably where it would be.
I, I have to, because of. The level of traffic does not seem to fit that size of.
Well, and it's not because of this, it's probably because of traffic coming from here and going to.
Either way, it's not.
Oh, so they gave you a look?
Can you?
Oh, can you zoom in on it more so we can see what, how it affects?
Or is this yours?
Right, I know, we're trying, that's okay. Can you zoom in on it? Because I'm not sure I see where it's taking away or your.
Side. Can you do it?
Can you go into the microphone and talk?
I'm sorry. So the public who's watching this all happen.
I wish we could.
Can you zoom in on it, Dan? Are you trying?
I'm trying to.
Okay, thank you.
For some reason, my cursor keeps disappearing every time I get to the.
There we go. Oh, so you may not actually lose anything.
Well, maybe, but.
I don't get it. What's the pink thing?
That would be a trail. So the blue line is the construction limit or proposed?
Right away.
Right away, yep.
Oh, so it does cut into one, so you lose one.
At least.
I mean, you guys are, understand that something needs to be done there, right? It's gonna be very challenging to leave it as is.
It's already a challenge.
It is to come, to head, like, if you're heading east and you want to turn left, it's very hard already. Okay.
We, once again, received this on Thursday.
Yeah.
Today is Monday.
Yep.
So this is kind of a game of whack-a-mole. This comes up after six months of Washington County looking at this. Now, what we see here is more than likely somebody in a planning department, not Washington County. They have a consultant that they use.
Hey, don't be cutting on the consultants, right, Jan?
See, the hour gets late and I'm gonna get in trouble, right?
You're gonna get whacked.
If you really want me to tell you what I think of it. But that's a hundred and sixty-five feet. That roundabout. That's as big a roundabout as you'll find anywhere.
Well, because they're probably trying to show you that this is how, the worst-case scenario, right?
Yeah, what somebody did is just took out a template from their file and dropped it right on here.
Plopped it there.
So.
So tell me, Len, if they, if this is what happens, how would you feel about it? If you lost one of the lots, are you still interested in doing this?
This is, this is where I come to work. You know, I like, I like to take an even-keel approach to things, that's my nature. But if somebody comes along and does this at the last minute, I'm gonna find out what their justification for the width of that is.
I understand, but I'm saying we need to make a decision tonight.
No.
I mean, we would like to. We may not be able to if we don't have an answer on that. So I need to understand how you feel if this doesn't change.
Mayor, so we already had in the report that the right-of-way dedication is subject to Washington County's approval. They have statutory authority to review any plot adjacent to their road and require it the right way.
Right.
What we're going to have to do is have to have discussion, as we did with ISD 834, between city staff, the developer, and the county to resolve this matter, because no one's had a chance to review or respond to it at this point.
Yeah, so if this does happen and Lot One cannot be developed, are you, what happened? What's your response to that?
I'm gonna proceed, one way or the other. I'm going.
And I, maybe I can address that, so.
Say that in the microphone. That's the one thing I need.
And the important thing is, this is the preliminary plot, right?
Right.
So we have, you know, we can bring back a final plot that is more or less consistent with this. We're hoping that we don't have to make changes.
Okay, got it.
The truth is, if you see this, and can you see my mouse here?
Yeah.
This is all right-of-way. So what they've done is just very inartfully slapped it down.
So they could push it?
They could shift this entire thing.
Okay.
None of this right-of-way is acquired. None of this right-of-way is acquired. They've just slapped it on there.
Okay.
And what you also don't see is that north, further north here, there's two very large chunks, probably at least an acre each, where they would take out all of the trees for a retaining wall. And we just, we're not confident that this is truly representative of the needs. You know, I think to your point, our study says we need a four-way stop sign. That's all that is warranted by our project. What they're doing, and if you read their letter, is a possible roundabout in the future. This is potential for the future. So we're gonna, we're gonna work with them, we're gonna work with your city staff. We'll try to identify and right-size this. We're gonna move forward under any circumstances, but we're gonna really try to right-size it. And ultimately, you know, you're gonna see something, but this is more or less pie in the sky and is probably a ten to fifteen years.
So especially with the right-of-way to the, I don't know, bottom left there, like, moving the whole thing over wouldn't necessarily impinge on any other homeowner's property rights.
Right, right. Right, and, you know, and part of this too is, you know, some of these trails don't really lead to anywhere. And again, those are very long-term plans, understand the point. What they're trying to do is get our attention. What we are just asking is that we have common understanding on this condition of approval, which is we don't want the city to just carry all their water and give them a blank check. We want to work with your staff to identify the actual needs.
You're talking about county, right? You said city.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Right, right. But we want to work with the city staff to identify, how do these tie into your trail plans, right? Is this necessary? And we don't know. And we just want to, we want to study this better, and that's what we're asking for, is a little bit of leeway. We just don't want the city to back the county and give them a blank check if we can all work together to right-size them.
We don't want a huge roundabout there.
No, is that like the roundabout up by Walmart? You know, a big concrete one?
That one is.
That's much bigger.
Yeah, that's just so.
That's, that's what's shocking, is the flow of traffic up by Walmart or whatever, where they have that little roundabout, is much higher than what is here. And that's what's kind of surprising to me.
Okay, so, I've also, I would want to better understand how staff feels about their idea to have, for the multifamily to be much taller than what we would require. Is that something you're uncomfortable with? Dan's gonna speak for it.
Mayor, so in response to their comment, I mean, you know, they're correct that thirty-five feet would limit to flat roofs. What you need to balance the height against is what they showed in their architecture stepping it back.
Yeah.
There is a way to do this where it provides them some additional flexibility. I think the first thing to recognize is that we should be counting it above the enclosed parking, because that's an amenity the city's going to want to have as partners. And let's start from that point. The first thing I would start out and say is the definition of building height in the zoning ordinance already is from average grade.
You guys, Dan's talking.
Average grade to a midpoint of a pitched roof, exactly, as they kind of described how it should be calculated. Most cities do it that way to recognize the value of the stepped roof. So that's already built in, but I think if you modify the condition to say maximum building height, three stories or thirty-five feet above enclosed parking, whichever is less, unless a greater height is approved with a PUD development plan. So that gives them the ability to come back with actual architectural plans for what's going to be built there, demonstrate how they're making the height consistent with the surrounding areas. If it's over the thirty-five feet, if they've stepped it back, as they show in these representative drawings, it will be most likely acceptable to the planning commission and council. The intent of the PUD district is to give some flexibility where it's warranted, consistent with the intent of the ordinance. I think that's an area where the planning commission and council can offer that.
Okay. Is there something that, like, can we put in there that it needs to be stepped back like that? Because I don't want it to just be a big scale. I know they don't really want that either, but I.
Yep. I think if we say unless approved with a PUD development stage plan, because then the planning commission and council reacting to the actual building plan, and you're saying, well, this isn't a straight wall thirty-five feet up, it's two stories and then it's stepped back. So the streetscape view will be a two-story building, and then they've, so they're consistent with the intent of what the thirty-five-foot limit was.
By the time it all happens, we could all be gone, though.
Correct, and then it would be up to the future planning.
They may not care.
To evaluate that. It's thirty-five feet at the discretion of the city.
Limit.
Yeah, I know.
It puts the burden on them to justify going higher with their architectural. So if they come back with what they showed, I think the feedback is, yeah, that's, we would approve that.
Yeah.
But if it's a straight up and down, you know, maximum efficiency building, it's likely not gonna pass muster.
Okay, thank you. And you already commented that you think if they are offering to do a contingency on not giving out permits on the last ten to twelve, that that's something we should take them up on?
Mayor, so you'd add a thirty-third condition. Phase one shall be limited to twenty-four single-family lots until such time as a PUD general development plan is approved for Lot One, Block Five.
Look at you writing those things on the fly.
I'm not just sitting here listening.
Thank you. Okay, let's see what else I had. How many different styles of villa homes can people actually choose from? Is it only those listed that are in the packet? Because you've mentioned like sixteen styles, but then in the packet, there's only like four, so.
We tried to limit the package size.
Yeah, okay, that's good. I just wanted to clarify that that's the intention.
Probably in the neighborhood of fifteen different designs.
Okay, good, because I didn't want it to be every fourth house is same.
So we're always coming up with something. So, we're always coming up with something, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to hear. How are you feeling about, um, the recent tariffs and how that might change the cost of the building?
The, the recent?
Tariffs.
Terrorist?
Tariffs from the federal government.
Um, I know it's a very recent development, but I feel like it could change a lot of things for you and everybody.
I control only that, I, what I can control.
But I'm just, like, I'm envisioning the 2008 thing happening and how all of a sudden, psh, inspiration wasn't building and...
Yeah, I've studied the lumber supply in our, in America. We're not quite, quite frankly, the reason of all the imports coming in from Canada is that the United States is not cutting their forests and supplying them, the material, I mean, the lumber. So, maybe what this'll do is encourage more of timber, timber cutting in our country. I know a little bit about this, but not enough to be an expert at all, but it's gonna be a combination of, I think, America's starting to cut their forests in what I call in, um, in a, in a process that enables the, the forests to be even more healthy, you know? We saw in California, as I give you an example, where the underbrush kind of grows and the trees die, and then what happens is the wildfires, fires come through and then, what you gotta do is you gotta clear trees now and then, and, uh, do a, a programmed approach to, to tree and timber. And, uh, anyway...
So, you're not worried?
I'm not worried.
Okay. Um, I'm just looking at some of the notes I jotted down when I was reading the packet. A lot of it has been covered, but I just wanna try to miss anything. Um, just to be clear, on the, the annexation portion, we're gonna have to have, um, a cooperative agreement with Baytown about the street that is going to be called First Avenue North because of the fact that we don't own all the land on the other side. So, it's a bit of a complication until, right? I mean, is there any more clarification we need on that, Eric, or...
No, that's one of the requirements, is to get the cooperative agreement.
Yeah. So, that's part of the, all the conditions of all of this, too? Or what are you saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, let's see, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. So, the trail, um, right now is being proposed on the south and heading east from, I can't, I don't have the names of the streets. Is that Bay Haven that comes right off of Stagecoach and in?
Yes.
Okay. And it's planned...
No, no, that's right, that's First Avenue North.
Oh, this is First Avenue North, and Bay Haven must be the one that ends in a cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, First Avenue North, duh, that makes sense. Okay, so that, the trail's gonna kind of come off the end of that and then go over into that little part that is right now not anybody's land, but it's going to be the... Oh, wait, no. The, the guy who owns the cell tower land, is it his? No?
It's a gap in the description.
There is still a gap. Okay, I thought that it, it said...
So, there's actual property between what is...
Okay.
As we described.
And then, we're suggesting that they extend that trail all the way past, like, the playground and hook up to the trail that gets to upper, from upper to lower park.
Correct.
Um, so, we, we then are being asked by the, the developer to give him a discount and on the park dedication fees.
Correct.
Um, how would all of that be figured out?
So, we have it written in the report currently that park dedication would be a cash fee in the old plan, and that any reduction for the construction of that trail would be determined by the city council at final plat, um, so that we know what the construction cost of the trail is, what the park dedication fee is, and then...
So, we'd have more information at that point when we're at final plat, so we can make a decision about, do we wanna do this and reduce our fees that we would be taking in, or just let it be a grassy trail like it is now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just, whoops, now I shut my phone off when I needed it on. One last check to make sure that I didn't miss anything. Um, we answered a lot of my questions already, so that's good. I would hope so, after all these people went ahead of me. There was a note, I guess, in the SEH memo, number sixteen, that said something about the extension of water and sewer between First Avenue North, between Bay Haven Way and Auto Drive, that only water was extended and not sewer? What, can someone help me understand? John, maybe you can talk now. What, is this a concern, or what?
Well, it's a, it's a, Mayor, it's a recommended condition of approval.
Okay.
So, I'm not concerned, but it is something that we raised and are recommending that it be a condition of approval.
Okay, and it's one of the conditions already?
I believe so.
Okay, that's, there was a lot I read today, and I can't remember what was in there. Okay. All right. Um, I think that's all the questions I have. So, does staff have any comments or anything that they'd like to add at this point, now that you've heard all of the feedback and answers? And I know earlier I was feeling very, um, uncomfortable with moving forward because the multifamily is so iffy still. Um, you guys have done a good job of helping me feel a little better about that, and I like the contingency idea that you've presented, so thank you for trying to put our minds at ease, 'cause you knew that we were nervous about it, and I'm sure you wanna get this done, just like, we, we wanna get it done, right? Instead of bringing it all back again. Um, so, I don't know how everyone else is feeling, but I'm, I'm feeling a, a little better. When I first got here, I was not ready to approve any of these things, to make these motions and agree to them, so... I know Ethan's on board. Everyone else feeling? If, if so, we would start with a motion from the planning commission to, we have two motions written up for us. One does the annexation and another does amending of the comprehensive plan, and...
I would all do the motion.
Okay, so you're gonna start with just the first one?
I, I move to adopt a resolution extending the corporate limits of Bayport to include the subject parcels, parcels in the annexation petition from Bradley and Janet Anderson, James and Christine Otto, and Frank and Kathleen Thompson, and an ordinance amending Appendix B zoning, section ten of the Bayport City Code of Ordinances, to record the annexation and the zone, and zone the properties upon annexation.
Sarah, will you take? Oh, wait, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
So, can I have like a point of procedure here?
Yes.
So, they're going to vote.
On, on recommending approval or not of this motion to us, and then we will do the same thing. If, if they think we should, then we will then have a motion from our group in a second and a vote. So, you can just say, I move the same as...
All right.
You don't have to read the whole thing. Yes, okay. So, we have a, a motion and a second from the planning commission, so now we need the roll call vote. Sarah?
Commissioner Siegfried?
Um, what am I saying? Yeah.
Aye.
I read the motion.
Yes, aye. I don't know what you guys say, when we go aye or nay.
Commissioner Oaks?
Aye, I approve.
Commissioner Kelly?
Um, I abstain, um, or recuse myself from voting because I work for the people who approve annexations, so I can't participate.
So, we still had the majority. So, now, it's on the city council's side. Knowing that the planning commission is recommending approving the annexation petition, do we have a motion?
I move the same motion.
Thank you, Katie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan. Roll call, Matt.
Uh, council member Dahl?
Dahl?
Dahl, sorry.
Aye.
Council member Gilmar?
Aye.
Council member Hill?
Aye.
Mayor Hanson?
Aye. All right. Ooh, welcome to Bayport.
Yeah.
Woo-hoo!
First step done.
All right, step one. And it was, at first, when I first saw the draft, there were four motions, and then I saw, why are there only two? And I was like, what's going on? And now I realize they got all merged into one, so, okay. So, same process, motion number two, if you guys would like to.
And, Mayor, before we make the motion, this would include amending conditions twelve C, nineteen, and thirty-three as discussed, so at the end of reading the motion, just state as amended.
Okay. Okay.
Dan, actually, for the record, and so everyone knows, maybe you could restate what those amendments are?
Thank you.
Twelve C would read the maximum building height allowed is three stories or thirty-five feet above enclosed parking, whichever is less, unless a greater height is approved with a PUD general development plan. Condition nineteen would be changed to the developer shall undertake a quietile action to acquire the apparent property gap north of Lot B Inspiration, third addition, with a portion of the parcel being deeded to the city with the final plat of Bay Haven, or as soon as practically possible. Number thirty-three is added to state phase one shall be limited to twenty-four single-family lots until such time as a PUD general development plan is approved for Lot One, Block Five.
And for members of the council, um, the wording of those three amendments, I thought were just excellent. I did not participate in the wording of any of those three, and so I'm getting worried that maybe my job will be taken away from me.